My phone too.
Well, they're gonna have to turn it off. Get the light switch off.
That good?
Good evening and welcome to our first meeting in November. It's good to see a few people out in our council chambers and those of you watching this on our Electric City Television. An invocation tonight will be given by Councilman Kyle Newton and our respects to the players to be played by Councilman Don Chapman. Please rise.
Father, we come to you tonight asking for your guidance, wisdom, support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion and allow us to grow closer as a group and to nurture the bonds of our community. Fill us with your grace and continue to remind us that everything we do here tonight is for the greater glory of you and for the service you manage. We also ask that you look over and provide support for Reverend D.B. Walker's family. He served 22 years on this council and was a stalwart in this community. But we ask all these things in your name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes of our October the 23rd meeting have been distributed. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Not hearing any, do I have a motion to approve?
No.
Out of first by Mr. Buck Roberts.
Second.
Second by Mr. Don Chapman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes of October 23rd pass unanimously. We'll go to old business and we have our first item of old business is request consideration of a resolution authorizing an infrastructure reimbursement agreement with Tetra Investments, LLC for Stone Bridge at Rankins Lake subdivision. Ms. McConnell?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce this subject to you and then we'd like to recommend that we table it until we get to the executive session part of our agenda. But for our listening audience and those who are present, this pertains to about 44 acres of land that we know as Stone Bridge at Rankins Lake, which was annexed in 2004. We, there are a number of homes that have been built in that subdivision and we have a program that existed at the time called our Infrastructure Reimbursement Program, which was created in 1996. It actually was a tool that we use to encourage development to happen faster thereby getting development on the tax books and our being able to offer city services to more people and it was certainly an economic development tool at the time. It allowed for a developer to be reimbursed for the cost of their public infrastructure in a subdivision such as, such as this. So that pertained to the streets, the storm sewers, the water and sewer lines, anything that was a public infrastructure improvement. Stone Bridge at Rankins Lake, the council agreed that it was an appropriate development that fit the criteria of the ordinance that was in place at that time and the, that is the issue that is before us tonight. It is a, a resolution and an agreement that would provide for the reimbursement of the infrastructure that pertains to phase one of that development. But as I said, to get to the details of that agreement, we do have that listed on our agenda under executive session and we would recommend that you table that until we get to this portion of our agenda.
Thank you. Does, we have any?
Move that be tabled.
Second.
Out of first. Yeah, it takes, is it two thirds of vote? I don't know. Mr. Attorney? Two thirds of vote, majority, supermajority?
Just some majority.
Just a simple majority?
Oh.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stand and table.
Thank you.
And I will stand.
Records note. Mr. Chapman, standing. Our second item is request second reading of ordinance 1710, amending chapter 50 of the Coda Ordinance of Anderson, South Carolina, provided for flood damage prevention for the city of Anderson. Ms. McConnell?
The National Insurance, National Flood Insurance Program is managed by FEMA and its purpose is to enable homeowners and business owners the opportunity to purchase flood insurance. And that flood insurance is federally backed, provided that the community adopts and enforces floodplain management regulations, which we have had in place for a number of years. The floodplain maps are updated on a periodic basis and they've just been through one of those revisions and it's those maps that identify the flood risk areas. So this is one of those tools that has as its objective to reduce future flood damage and of course, we've heard an awful lot about flood damage and certainly a lot of other parts of the country this year with various weather-related events. I'd like to turn this over to City Attorney McLean, who can share any further details about this, essentially a mandate if we want our citizens to be able to participate in this flood insurance program.
Like Ms. McConnell said, this does allow us to participate in the federal flood insurance program. We adopted the model ordinance in 2011 and they submitted to us through a new ordinance with just a few amendments that dealt basically with dates or definite dates instead of subjects and subjective language that was in the prior order. And there was a couple of other minor changes that really had no significant effect on the ordinance itself, but they're asking that we adopt the amendments and Mr. Everhart has also been over, over these amendments.
And we have to do it by a certain date?
Get it sent within the time period.
We did have it on the agenda at the last meeting. Are there any further additions to Linda and her team?
So this will allow anyone who's in floods to only get flood insurance?
Yes, ma'am.
It would allow anybody in Anderson to get flood insurance?
Yes.
And also assistance. I guess that's the big thing.
FEMA assistance if you have them.
If we did have flood damage, it would allow the citizens to apply for low interest loans. Do you think?
Does that Mayor make a motion to approve it on second read?
Out of first by Mr.
Second.
Lockridge. I mean, Mr. Auburn, second by Mr. Lockridge. Ms. Chapman?
I just have a question. Is, is there a map associated with this?
Yeah.
So it's, it's part of this document? It's just not?
It will, it will be, yeah.
And there, there's sets, yes, sets of maps.
But it's part of this particular document.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously on the second and final read. Thank, thank you, Chris. Our next item is request consideration of an ordinance to annex and zone to general commercial approximately 1.21 acres located at 3800 Clemson Boulevard. Ms. McConnell?
This is a piece of property which you would probably better know as the previous location of Zaxby's Restaurant. The current Zaxby's has been demolished and the owners and franchise owner intends to rebuild Zaxby's in accordance with more modern standards for their restaurant franchise. The, when we talked about this last time, site work had begun on the property. They had planter curbs and some curb and gutter installed on the site. They initially began their process with Anderson County Building and Codes because the property was outside of the city limits. We have received their building plans and their plans were approved by the county, but the county has now turned those plans over to us and we will be performing the inspections. We've issued the building permit. We'll be performing all of the level of activities associated with that construction on, on this site. So based upon the acceptance of the annexation application, we're, we've accepted those approved plans and we'll be responsible for ultimately issuing the certificate of occupancy. Planning Commission did hear this at their November the 7th meeting and unanimously recommended approval of the annexation zone.
Thank you. Questions? Comments?
Do we approve this on second read?
Out of first right out by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lockridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously on the first read. Our next item of old business is request consideration of an ordinance to annex and zone to R5, single-family residential approximately a half acre located at 1010 Route Drive. Ms. McConnell?
This piece of property is in a residential neighborhood, as you stated. It is owned by Mr. Al Norris and he wishes simply to make this part of the city limits because his current other piece of property is inside the city and it would simply be consistent under his ownership. Again, it's a, just a single lot. Planning Commission heard this at their November the 7th meeting and recommends unanimously approval of the annexation and zoning.
Thank you.
This is in, back about two doors from our house and it's an appropriate thing to do, so I think that we pass this on the second read.
First read.
First read.
We have a first by Dr. Thompson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harvard. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously on the first read. Our last item of old business is request consideration of an ordinance to rezonate 401 Concord Road from R15, single-family residential to LO Limited Office. Ms. McConnell?
The purpose of the rezoning is, is in order to allow the subject. Limited Office is that least intensive zoning classification in which a barbershop could be classified. The neighborhood in this vicinity has a variety of land uses, as you can see on your map. You've got residential in the classification of R10 and R15. You also have multifamily in the area, neighborhood commercial and neighborhood professional. And then you, in addition to that, you still have light industrial and a non-conforming use. So you can tell it's a real, it's been an area that's been, I think, going through transition over time for a variety of uses and some of which have been there for a long time. The Planning Commission heard this at their request on November the 7th and recommend unanimously approval. And I would remind you that even though this, the rezoning provides for the intended use, it would still mean that in order to make the property convert from that residential use to the commercial use, the applicant would still need to submit plans to the building department that shows how they'll meet the landscaping, the parking requirements, whatever changes need to be made to the building itself. If you've driven by there, you will notice that there have been some improvements to the site already, so it's certainly in the, has the ability to be transformed into a productive use, if that's your desire.
Thank you. Any comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Sparkles?
I think by making that into something usable, it's best used for this anyway. You start at Willie Woods and go all the way to Main Street. It's gonna be better if fixed up somebody in it and us collecting our money.
I think the Planning Commission would agree with you.
So I'll make a recommendation.
Second.
Out of first by Mr. Auburn, second by Mr. Newton. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We'll get to our new business. We have four items of new business and the first item is request consideration of accomod- accommodations tax, ATAX, if I was a committee of recommendations. Ms. McConnell?
It's, this is that time of year when you all consider the, procreating the dollars that are, we're fortunate to collect from those, what we call heads in beds, people who spend the night here and pay an accommodations tax on their hotel stay. Those dollars come back to us in the, in the form of these allocations that we make annually. We have, we're fortunate this year in that we have $130,000 and some change to allocate. We had $175,500 that was requested by 27 applications. So even though this accommodations tax committee meets really just once a year, they have a pretty heavy-duty task in the terms of reviewing each of these applications and trying to make a determination about the applicant's history, what the type of activity or program they want funded, they have to submit data collection that shows that it was truly beneficial in terms of trying to increase the tourism benefit, especially to our city, and what kind of sustainability does that type of project or activity or event have. So they take their job very seriously as a committee. They recommend it, the, I will say that the people who are on the committee are Rebecca Purify, Purifoy, who is representing the hotel industry at the Blackley Inn, Cindy Suddles from the Holiday Inn, John Doolittle represents the hospitality industry, as does Shelton Pace, Vicki Color represents arts and culture, and Summer Fredette and Chris Glenn represent both hospitality and at your at-large appointments. So I'd like to publicly thank them for the time they, and diligence they spent in this regard. We do have one suggestion as far as the committee's recommendation and that pertains to the three applications that were submitted. Staff recommends that we take no action on those three requests tonight, but we do recommend approval of all of the other requests, just like the committee has recommended. And you have a list attached to your package that shows everything from 24-hour musical to the museum, to the Arts Center, Anderson County Senior Citizens Program, Anderson University. The city of Anderson actually has three programs, four programs in there, movie nights in Carolina Renn Park, Holiday Ice, Fresh Taste, and our own hospitality program, Electric City Playhouse, Foothills Alliance, GAMAC, the Main Street Program, Meals on Wheels, the O'Conne Conservatory of Fine Arts, and that might sound funny, but it's the Upstate Heritage Quilt Trail for which we have those quilts that are located right here in our community. The Market Theater Company. So that's a, really about $130,000 worth of programming.
Very good. Comments, questions? Ms. Chapman?
So I do appreciate everything that the committee has done and the work that they do. The only question I have is, we have eight organizations excluding the ones that we're removing temporarily. We have eight organizations that are, that are receiving between 1,500 to as much as $5,000 less than what they requested, but yet are, one of our, our own line items, we requested 10,000 for the, the hospitality program and we're giving 12,000. And it's just perception of that is that we have eight that got less, but yet we're getting $2,000 more for one of our own organizations and it seems a little bit off skew, a little bit.
Well, the, just to share a little bit. With hotels to try and encourage their knowledge of our city and how activities and events and, and truly try and increase the number of heads in beds. So it's a hotel-specific type of activity.
And I'm, I'm not, I'm not debating whether or not it's worthy, because I think all of them are worthy. I'm just, that it's the only one that stands out to me that they're receiving $2,000 more than what they even requested, when there were eight organizations that didn't even, didn't receive, that received less than what they requested. That's all. It's just a comment. It just, it seems like we're cutting the pie, but we're giving ourselves the biggest piece.
Well, I would say too, I mean, as Ms. McConnell pointed out last week, that I first met her on the, this committee and, but it is committee-driven. I mean, I mean, it is, it's not staff-driven, it's committee-driven. How long does this meet take?
About four hours.
Yeah.
Four hours, yeah.
But I remember it took a long time, but that's a good point. Any other comments, questions?
Sorry, the reason if Anderson Lights of Hope did not fund, I see some information here, but could you explain to me why did it not be funded? They asked for $15 when you got zero.
I'd like to ask Mary Haley Thompson to help us. She's served as a staff support to the committee.
So with the Lights of Hope, just with everyone, the people from the restaurants and the hotels and everything, they did not, they have not seen in the past an impact in their businesses from the Lights of Hope and it with it, you know, the new location, they just haven't seen the benefit to their business and it putting heads in beds and, and then helping with the restaurants. And then they just had some particular questions about the budget that they would like to see. You know, they would like to fund it in the future, but maybe with some changes in their marketing and, and budget line items and things of that nature and to try to advertise the businesses more at the Lights of Hope, to encourage those visitors to not just leave after their tour of the event, but to also stay in the hotels and eat at the restaurants.
Where's the location? Has something to do with it, the relocation?
Yeah, and that was one of the things, but the overall program that none of them in the room had seen a benefit to their business specifically.
Dr. Thompson, I think historically to add to what Mary Haley says is they, they see it as a, as an attraction, but it's an attraction where people ride through and then leave the community as opposed to staying, lingering, attending other activities or restaurants or spending the night, that sort of thing.
Thank you. Anything else, guys?
I make a motion to approve this meeting.
Out of first by Mr. Auburn. Second by Dr. 10. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Again, I reiterate what Mr. Chapman, Ms. McConnell, thinking the committee for their four hours of work. Thank you. Our next item is request consideration of hospitality funding for various recreation projects. I think Ms. McConnell's gonna tee us another and Mr. Bevel is going to lead us through the three projects. I will say that this recommendation is coming from the Recreation Committee.
It is.
What I'd like to do is maybe if Mr. Bevel can go through the, the three items and give us a high-level view of what is being requested and then we can come back and ask questions and we can vote for them all together, we can vote for them several. I don't, I mean, that doesn't matter, but maybe Bobby could, and Linda can lead us through it and Bobby can get us through the, through the three items. Ms. McConnell?
Mr. Mayor, you intro'd this very well. The committee did meet on September 28th, the Recreation Committee, and as you'll see, each, they recommended to move forward with the list of projects that Mr. Bevel will explain to us. And I think that it's important to note that our funding for these projects does come from our hospitality fund and at the end of September, our balance in the hospitality suffice it to say that we do have funding available in order to move these projects forward and moving forward with these projects does not stop any other progress on any other projects that are on our wish list or our to-do list. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bevel.
Thank you for Ms. McConnell. The first item was the St. Francis Playground Upgrade. Most of you know that St. Francis is near Friendship Court and we haven't done a lot there over the years and not intentionally as much, the first master plan had even recommended that we try to give Friendship Court or deed Friendship, or St. Francis Part II, Friendship Court. So it really hasn't been on our radar as much, but we've had a lot of people that have requested an improvement over there and there are a lot of kids who live in Friendship Court that could benefit from this. Dr. Thompson had been contacted by citizens as Mr. Lockridge and myself and we had a businessperson, Jay Patel, who had expressed interest in trying to give back to the community. So this was one of the items that the Recreation Committee looked at and approved to move forward with getting proposals. We sought out the playground companies who we've done business with or in the area and they have provided estimates of putting in a new play structure, a two-foot base swing set, they had four swings, picnic table, trash receptacle, new fencing and, and ADA drive access that Chris Everhart had estimated the supplies and that we could do that basically in-house. There's not a lot of grade change at St. Francis, so it was something that we felt like that city crews could do, we just paid for the materials. The playground companies submitted bids. Churchit out of Hilton Head was the lowest bid at 22,8978. Bars Recreation out of Mooresville at 32,137 and Bliss Products out of Georgia at 36,000. As far as the structures and every, wood fiber and borders, they were very competitive. The biggest difference in those companies were shipping and installation. Both Bars and Bliss were much higher as far as shipping and their installation price. So we recommend Churchit Recreation for the play structure and then a lot, another 17,000 for, and some change for our materials for our city crews. And we did get a price on fencing and even though that we would still get other prices before we move forward with that, advanced fencing had given us a price of 59,83 for fencing around the playground. The second item is cardio equipment for our Recreation Center. When we purchased this in 2013, we had put a replacement plan in place to replace equipment based on certain number of hours and mileage and use. This is part of our capital improvement plan and we've got machines that are in need of being replaced. Julia is here and can answer specific questions, but she sought out proposals of getting four pieces of cardio equipment as well as two whole-body vibration machines. We looked at these and Advantage Sports Fitness out of Ithaca, New York submitted a bid of 20,000. Fitness out of Ithaca, New York, submitted a bid of 20,000, but they cannot supply all the equipment that we needed. You see the asterisk beside that. The, they were unable to secure the two Octane Fitness seated elliptical machines. We took the price that especially Carolina Specialty used and add to that, and that actually makes the Advantage Sports even higher than the Carolina Specialty Fitness. We've done business with them, we're familiar with them and their maintenance work. So we recommend purchasing the equipment from Carolina Specialty Fitness, Columbia, South Carolina for 27,727. The last item on the list is ready project for restrooms concession stand at our Phase Two ball fields. Two new ball fields are not new, we really just completed our fourth year there, but we have thought that we would do the concession stand and restrooms when we did Phase Three. But we're at a point now, we're getting so many rentals from outside agencies to use it, that we feel like it's best to go ahead, get a building there, have it designed that it would accommodate whatever is on Phase Three as we move forward. We sought a proposal from the Land Plan Group, who did our master plan update, who are very familiar of what our future programming would look like, and some of the things that we discussed. We were also impressed with Boudreau, their architect, who did the conceptual design expansion of the Recreation Center. So they are very familiar with our needs and ideas and the direction that we want to go. So the proposal from Land Plan Group was 39,750. That was to design 2,000 square-foot concession restroom, provide overall project management, civil engineering design, landscape architect design, architectural interior design. And for the purpose of this, their estimate was around 400 to 425 for the building itself. We're not looking to build the building, we would like to have the drawings ready, that when we are in a position financially with the hospitality, that we could bid it out and we'll be ready to go to process bids from that standpoint.
Good, thank you. Stay right there.
Yes.
We are, let's go through each one of these councils. If we got any questions in regards to the St. Francis Playground Update?
I'd just like to make a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Just for one area. And it's a very much-needed project. This playground has been neglected for many years, and there are a lot of children who live in that area, in Friendship Court. It's not so often you get someone in the community to say, "I will invest in this because I think it's needed." And Ms. Patel came up and said, "I'll invest," and invested 350, and will say he will do more and encourage other businessmen to invest in our project. So I feel really good about this project because it's something that's needed in that neighborhood, and I'm excited that this is about to happen.
Any other comments on the St. Francis project, questions? Let's move on to the fitness equipment exchange and upgrade for this action item.
Might as well have a comment. I just spoke with somebody today that, Mr. Bevel, they spoke very highly of their, they utilize the Recreation Center weekly, and spoke very highly of the level of equipment. And as they put it, in their words, were the best-kept secret in Anderson. So I commend you for what, for what you do for our general public.
I've got, I've got good people around me that do it.
You'll go on on that, won't you, Bobby?
Yes.
My only question is, what is a whole-body vibration?
Well, I can get Julia down here. That is the most popular item that we have. We had bought one of these, or seen one of these at our health fair. And we actually have a doctor who recommends people who have plantar fasciitis to come do this, because they've seen great results. Julia, can you come down and explain a little bit about this? The machines that we had purchased, we were no longer able to get parts for, and so they were, a lot of those, we couldn't even buy new ones, kind of thing. So we took a long time trying to find another machine that it was more, I guess, commercial, because people stand in line to be on these things. And then fuss, because some lady's been, or some guy's been on it 30 minutes, and you can't be on it that long, kind of thing. But so I'll get Julie to explain a little bit more about this.
This particular brand of machine called a Power Plate is, as Bobby mentioned, it's high-grade, commercial, it's actually medical-grade. So a lot of therapists and physicians recommend that their patients come to us to use them. So it's a large platform that has high-frequency vibration. You can set the speed and the frequency of the vibration, and the higher frequency actually activates the muscles. So you can use it for stretching, strength, flexibility. A lot of people like it because they feel like they've had a nice little massage. So they come into the rec, they walk, they exercise, and spend a couple minutes on the vibration machine, and it feels like they've had a nice little massage.
Really?
Learn something new every day.
It's the best-kept secret in Anderson.
We've come a long way from the belt that you put around you.
Oh, yeah.
All right, good. Anything else on that one? Our last one is the restroom concession stand design. Anything else? Ms. Oliver?
Mr. Bevel, I appreciate the work of the committee. Do you have an idea of when, or wish list, when this might come to fruition?
As far as getting the plans or actually building?
Getting a bill.
Well, again, I think it depends on our hospitality cash flow. One of the good things that Phase Two and Carolina Renn Park bond payment will be paid in May. And so the restaurant was paid off last year, so those two bonds tied up 1.1 million in hospitality collections. So I'm hoping it'll be this coming year, in 2018. But again, based on our cash flow, which has been very good, we've been meeting the projections monthly as far as hospitality collections, new restaurants are opening. And so, you know, baby needs shoes, eat out, kind of thing.
You know, with that, I know some people that use the high-frequency vibration machine, speak very highly of it.
Ms. Bevel?
Appreciate everything that y'all do.
Just a quick question. So we're talking about a possible date, this could be constructed, and part of this contract states overall project management. So if we decide to postpone, they're going to postpone with us and guarantee us, we're still going to handle this project? If we decide to wait five years to go forward with it, or will we pay as we go? Will that be reduced from the initial fee? And how will we handle that part until, wait until Mr. Bevel says it's time to pull the trigger?
Well, in this case, contract administration, because it's, because it's two firms, I think what they're really talking about in this case, and Bobby, you can, you can help me out, that their, their land plan south is the lead, we'd be actually contracting with them, and they would associate the Boudreau Group. So there, that, I think, contract, contract administration in this sense is more about how that team comes together, as opposed to what we're typically used to being more construction management, contract admin. If that makes sense.
All right. I'm just talking about overall project management. So for me, I'm reading this, it seems to me from start to finish, they're going to handle it all.
They are.
Yeah. At any point we choose to get forward.
Yeah, well, no, what you're doing, all you're with us and y'all, and come up with a plan to build a building that we all want. A building that has concessions and restrooms in it principally, but whatever how it's configured, we know where it's going in terms of its location. But we want them to take it all the way to construction documents, so that when we're ready to build it, all we got to do is, is say move forward.
I think this was to move forward on his
Ms. Chapman? If I could add to, Mr. Oliver, I think what, the way it reads, it sounds as if it's a start-to-finish completion from this firm. And I would expect that the, that the fee services is going to be broken out, so that if we don't move forward on the construction immediately, we don't pay that portion of the, or typically that's where a lot of the are done. Is that, is that a fair statement?
You would be correct, yes. That's a fair statement.
Because the way I read it, it is a start-to-finish. Okay.
But I think that the timeframe that they gave us would be about for three to four months to get to the construction documents, kind of thing. So that's going to put us into February, March of next year. So we're pretty close of having that bond paid off.
Good. Anything?
I make a motion to approve this. I appreciate the work of the committee and Mr. Bevel, what you're doing for our community.
Seven.
And your motion is all projects?
All three.
Thank you. So we have first, and we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, side?
Aye.
Post. Passage, Ms. Anderson?
Thank you.
Thank you. Our third item, a new business, is request consideration for architectural and engineering services for City Hall and municipal buildings. Ms. McConnell?
You all may remember that during our budget discussions this past year, we had a lot of conversation about the capital maintenance on our facilities and our buildings. And principally, what that centered around was this particular building, which if you remember, is a collection of buildings that have been built and roofed and added to and subtracted from over time. So there are a number of roof, roof pieces, parts, structures up there. And over time, we've had roof leaks that we've had to repair. This type of project would, once and for all, address the whole system. And in addition to that, I mean, in addition to kind of looking at the roof and determining what to do, we know that a roof is attached to walls, which lead to things on the inside of the building. So this doesn't, this doesn't just look at the roof and the vacuum, it's our kind of building envelope, so to speak, and our roof. In addition to that, it also gives us the opportunity to do the same assessment and plan for needs that need to be addressed in terms of our municipal business center. Assistant City Manager David McEwen has worked really hard on this and has seen this project through to this part tonight, and I'd like to ask him to add to this discussion.
Thank you, Ms. McConnell. Mayor and City Council, this is a project that is very complex in nature, as Ms. McConnell mentioned, particularly for the City Hall complex, with all the different additions, add-ons, different roof systems, building envelope needs. And then we have some slight issues, maintenance issues that need to be addressed at the municipal business center. So with that, we were, the city endeavored to find qualifications for firms for architectural engineering services back in October. We had a good response. The city received 10 responses from firms. A selection committee consisting of the city engineer, public works director, planning development director, and myself evaluated the 10 proposals. We did that on the basis of the procurement code, past performance, the ability of professional personnel, demonstrated ability to meet time and budget requirements, location of the firm and its consultants, and recent current projected workloads of the firm, and creativity and insight related to the project, and related experience with similar projects. Through the ranking, the ranking sheets found in your packet, the summary ranking sheet, the top three ranked firms were DP3 Architects, LTD out of Greenville, their headquarters in Greenville, Nova Engineering Environmental LLC, who holds an office in Greenville. It's important to note that DP3 Architects teamed up with WM Building Envelope Consultants to submit, and WM Building Envelope Consultants teamed up with DP3 to submit. So we had dual submittal there from each of them, one taking the lead versus the other one. DP3 was notified that it was the highest-ranked firm. The committee recommended DP3 based on their experience in overseeing complexes, projects of institutional and commercial buildings, as well as based on their knowledge of municipal operations and facility needs. A full team was assembled for the project from DP3, including architectural, roof and envelope consultants, structural engineers, electrical engineers, and mechanical and plumbing engineers, really taking a comprehensive look at the project, assembling the team together, is, and outlined that teams would impress the committee, and reflected in the rankings themselves. Of course, as I mentioned, the team includes WM Building Envelope Consultants of Anderson. This is the principal, Jeff Martin, who does a lot of work with us now on some maintenance and building issues with, with our roofs on our facilities across the city. DP3 was asked to develop a proposal broken down in two phases. And this is most like what you see in, I know we hadn't done in a while for a building, or buildings, but what you see in a water or sewer line project, where we do preliminary engineering. So we work with the firm to develop what the scope of the work is, investigate, determine our needs. So in this case, the Phase One preliminary engineering is looking at existing facility conditions. It's an investigation and assessment of those, development of recommendations, order of magnitude of the cost estimate, estimating, and file documentation. So this preliminary engineering is in Phase One, and that proposal from DP3 is 40,650. And then Phase Two, just as we do with water or sewer projects, would be the actual bidding out, construction administration, and having the project under construction. And the Phase Two proposal from them is, would range, the fees would range from seven to 10% of the construction costs. So at this time, we're asking the City Council to approve the Phase One preliminary engineer, will develop our cost estimates, and then bring that information back to council for the continuation of Phase Two and the negotiation of the contract for the construction administration. In attendance tonight is Mr. Mike Taylor, he's managing principal of DP3 Architects, and he's here if you have any additional questions regarding the proposal itself. Let me mention the, that their team does consist of outlined out, architectural, the envelope consultants out of Anderson, the structural engineers who are out of Greenville, and the electrical engineer was out of Greenville, and the mechanical and plumbing engineer was out of Greenville. Some reference projects to note, DP3, and they have, they have a large portfolio of projects, is City of Clemson, the City Hall Complex additions, they completed that for them. See if Travelers Rest, City Hall, Police Headquarters, Design and Build, just had an opportunity to look at that a couple weeks ago, and it looks fantastic. Clemson University, Harden Hall Restoration, this project intrigued the committee and their experience on this, because it was an 1890s-built building with two additions, with two additions in 1900 and in 1940. And they did the full rehab and rehabilitation of that building, which we understand to be complex. And we're dealing, of course, this complex with a very historical side, the police department side, and then you have the modern, more modern-day building that we're in, and a lot, a lot of different components. City of Chester, historic City Hall building, had rehab, stabilization. And right now, they're currently building the public works complex for the city of Greenville and doing some other work for them. So they, they had some great references that we checked out, and have performed a comprehensive, excellent job on those projects for them. But if you have any additional questions, I'll be glad to answer them, and Mr. Taylor as well.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions or comments to Mr. McEwen or Mr. Taylor? Ms. Chapman?
Might as well have a comment. Although I'm very excited to see that we're actually moving forward. Although I'm very excited to see that we're actually moving forward with the maintenance of our, our buildings because I know we, we talk about building buildings all the time and our years now, I think, seven or eight years have been commenting on the municipal building that we, you know, we have a new building and somewhat personally, I, I think it's kind of disappointing that we're having some of the issues that we're having with the building, especially around the water table separating from the building. And that's where we're getting a lot of our water intrusion. So I, um, and, and we've got, I'm glad that we're getting to the point that we're gonna stop that because it's only gonna get worse. So, um, I, I just wanted to make that comment that I'm very excited that we're, we're moving forward to maintaining the buildings that we have, so.
Who was the architect watching over that?
Uh, it was not, it, it was not DP Thirty.
He sure wasn't watching over. Yeah. Siemens.
Uh, well, that was the engineer.
Was that the engineer?
Neil Prince and part, Neil Prince and Partners, yes.
No, no one.
Correct.
Any other comments?
We're on the deal with municipal building and City Hall.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
The, the majority of the work, uh, we have a lot of work to be done here at City Hall, which will probably lead down the road to some additional phases too, particularly on the police department side, the store building side.
How old is City Hall now?
Well, the, you know, the, the police department side is an eighteen ninety-eight structure and this addition was a two, we moved in like in two thousand and one.
Two thousand and one, right. And then the NBC, as, uh, Mr. Chapman, um, addressed, has, has some maintenance issues and some, um,
It's not that old either.
Right.
It's an eight-year-old building.
There's some, there's some issues with the gutter system over there that we would like to address, that would address some of the issues coming down the envelope of the system, then also the foundation of the building, the separation, Mr. Chapman mentions an issue. So, uh, we feel that DP Three Architects has, has that experience to be able to make the best recommendations and move forward with how to remediate that.
We need to get started so it won't get worse.
Our hope is to
Get started.
Get started.
With that, I'd like to make a recommendation we accepted as presented.
Second. First one, Mr. Chapman. Second one, Mr. Lockridge. Any further discussion? All those in favor side? Opposed? The passage, ma'am? Unanimous? Thank you, guys. Thank you. Mike. Our last item of new business is request consideration of economic development incentive agreement with Whitner and Company. Ms. McConnell?
Um, very similar to our item number one in our own business, I'd like to introduce this subject and then we do have it on the agenda for, um, executive session. Um, this is an economic development incentive agreement proposal, the, with Whitner and Company. And as you know, we have certainly, um, taken to heart our economic development activity, not just, um, downtown, but all throughout our city. This particular project is downtown. It's at one oh nine South McDuffie Street. To orient you, that is, um, really in the block directly behind what we knew of as the County Bales Building site. So it's between Whitner and Benson Streets. Um, it has, uh, been undergoing renovation. If you drive by it now, you'll see, uh, changes to the front of the building, the side of the building, the rear of the building. And, um, it's renovations, it's thirty-one hundred square feet. It has the ability and the plan to accommodate thirty-two startup or expanding businesses. So we refer to this as, we've been referring to it and it's been in the news as being, um, the site of co-work space. And we've, um, several of us and several of you have seen this type of a, uh, business group, um, in other cities where a lot of times you have a startup business or a business that is, um, a little bit of a fledgling and they're looking for space, they don't need thirty-one hundred square feet, they just need a place to, to call home and to get their, uh, business up and running. This would actually accommodate those types of, uh, startup or expanding businesses. They plan to make a total investment of about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That's the, um, acquisition of the property as well as the improvements. And we would tell you that as far as what we're asking for you tonight in terms of the economic development development incentive program. And if you remember, part of that criteria, uh, said that your type of business needed to be, uh, research and development, high technology growth business, and you had to meet those, um, capital investment, uh, thresholds. So we would like to discuss this more in executive session as far as the particulars of this economic development, uh, agreement. We'll tell you that the Economic Development Committee met on October the eleventh and, um, and I think this is, um, the type of, of incentive program and the type of business and development activity that will further submit our own entrepreneurial efforts and a, a good opportunity, uh, for us to, uh, really continue our efforts. So, Mr. Mayor, we would suggest that, uh, we, um, talk about this more in executive session, um, as your agenda states, those two items, the infrastructure reimbursement for Stone Bridge at Rankins Lake and also in executive session, discussion of negotiations relative to the economic development incentive agreement for in your, excuse me, in your calendar of events, um, we're quickly, um, running through the month of November. We have on Thursday of this week, the Southeast Anderson Task Force at five-thirty at the, uh, Hannah Westside Career Campus. On Sunday, the nineteenth, we have a very special, um, project that will make its debut and its dedication, that's the Church Street Heritage Park Dedication, Sunday, beginning at three P M. It will take place in the Church Street Heritage Park and it also, another portion of the program will take place actually inside the Blackley Inn. So this is, um, a project that, um, I, Dr. Thompson has more words than I do, but I described it as a project of wonderment and I hope you all can join us for that. It promises to be extra special.
Just say it, it's going to be extra special. Please come and be with us on Sunday at five.
Um, other activities next week include the Westside Community Coalition at four P M. at the Westside Community Center. And please mark your calendar for the, um, real opening of Holiday Ice in Carolina Renn Park at five P M. So we're glad to, um, be able to offer that as a special activity during the holidays. Our city offices will be closed for Thanksgiving on Thursday and for Friday and really that just brings the month to a conclusion. And if you're marking your calendar, you might take note that, um, the tree lighting, Christmas tree lighting will be Friday, December the first at six P M. And the Christmas parade, Sunday, December the third. So we're, um, I don't know where November went, but we're off and running into the holiday season.
Let's go.
That's all we have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate it. That's a lot. Um, I would entertain a motion to go to executive session. First by Mr. Buck Roberts. Second by Mayor Pro Tim. I'll take them individually. The, the first item was a discussion of negotiations, incident to propose contractual agreements regarding the infrastructure reimbursement with Tetra LLC for Stone Ridge at Rankins During, during that part of executive session, we heard, um, city manager and her team, um, give a recap of this incentive agreement, um, in form of a resolution. Do we have any comments or discussion?
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to, uh, make a motion that we, uh, we adopt the infrastructure reimbursement agreement with, uh, Tetra Investments LLC for Stone Bridge at Rankins Lake.
In the amount of, not to exceed eight hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Eight hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Thank you. I have a, first by Mr. Harbin.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lockridge. Any further discussion? All those in favor side? Opposed? That resolution and infrastructure agreement passes unanimously. In the second item, we had a discussion of negotiations, incident to propose contractual agreements regarding economic development incentive plan with Whitner and Company. During that session, we again heard a, a, a recap of the project itself and the, um, the positive economic development, uh, aspects of it. Do we have any other questions or comments on the floor? If not, I'd entertain a, uh, Mr. Roberts.
Make a motion, will you approve the, uh, agreement with Whitner and Company?
Yeah, first by Mayor Pro Tim.
Incentive agreement.
Second. Second by Mr. Harbin. Further discussion? All those in favor side? Opposed? That passes unanimously. I do entertain a motion to adjourn. We have first by Mr. Newton, second by Dr. Thompson. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? We stand adjourned.